Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle and secondary school website in the district. Roll call. This is Caminiti.
Here.
Mr. Donlin. Mr. Jaimo. Mr. Heffernan.
Here.
Mr. Little. Mr. Tobacco. Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Capone.
Here.
Mrs. Minnies.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Almost. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, see everybody in exec...
Good evening, everyone. I adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Esberry Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school website in the district. Roll call?
This is Caminiti.
Here.
Mr. Donlin? Mr. Dymo?
Here. Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco? Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
Mrs. Benewes?
Here. Can we all please stand for the flag? The flag is to the back. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna start with our first opportunity for public comments on agenda items only. No one? Amy, do you have one?
Chris, is there anyone online?
No.
Okay, we did have a public comment that was emailed to us by our public comment email address on the website. And I will read it as follows. It is from William Wrightson. And I'm reading it verbatim. "Hi, this is Bill Wrightson, currently custodian, finishing my 19th year. I'm presently at Middle Village. Please explain to me and all custodians how the board has the audacity to approve $2,600 raises for our two supervisors, less than one year and no previous experiences in school systems?" Question mark. "This is not a knock on the two individuals, but on the procedures currently in place. I started in 2002 at $23,000. I will be at $40,000 starting July 1st, 2021. I also interviewed for the night supervisor position, only to be told that the BOE was not filling the position at this time. The custodial staff has been working very hard throughout the pandemic every minute of every day, and you pat them on the back by giving supervisors raises while the staff must be happy, pleasant, bend over backwards, and most of all thankful for a job?" Question mark. "I would hope during this time, especially where we need to be valued the most as frontline workers, that the BOE would consider the custodial staff worthy of an additional raise in addition to our contracted raise. Please consider this request. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Mrs. Gallagher. All right, so you know other public comments on agenda items?
One hand that went up.
Oh, we have again? Okay, go ahead.
Hello, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, hi Nicole.
Hi, my name is Nicole Grealmi. I'm an alumnus. I graduated from Middletown High School South in 2020. So I was just commenting on the agenda item pertaining to the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources Curriculum and Instruction position. So I know that this is one of a few different positions that have recently opened up to either reform the curriculum or bring diversity to our school. And this isn't meant to be a personal attack against either of the individuals who have received these positions, but I'm just wondering how diversity is going to be prioritizing these positions for, to my knowledge, both have been filled by white people. So I'm just wondering if you have any, if you are gonna have any standards for how you want to implement diversity into this? Because as many have said in over the summer, we brought up, much of our faculty is white. Many students of color have voiced their concerns with that and how, one, white teachers just don't know how to handle certain situations, even with anti-racist training, as great as it is, and I'm glad to hear that it's being mandated, that isn't enough because they just don't have the lived experiences that students of color have. So I'm just wondering if you could tell me and anyone else, you know, how you are going to prioritize this? Because I've also heard like different committees, very qualified teachers of color who have applied for them were not accepted to them. And if, you know, you say that you prioritize diversity, then why aren't they being chosen for these positions? Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Any other hands? Okay, no other hands up. We're going to go into our voting meeting.
Mrs. Benewes, can I just confirm? Mrs. Tobacco, are you in the meeting? I'm just trying to take attendance. I see her there.
Jackie, are you there?
Shoot her a text real quick. I didn't. She's here.
I'm just not, yeah. And Mr. Donlin didn't respond before.
Mike, are you there?
He did say. He said.
Oh, there's Jackie right there.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just wanna make sure I've got everybody marked correctly. I'm sorry, Mrs. Benewes, go ahead.
Okay, first we have the proclamation for Special Education Week in New Jersey. Do we have to, we have to vote on that?
No, it's not a vote. We just.
Okay. And we'll move down to the superintendent report.
Okay, I just wanna report on a couple of things. At our last meeting, we did share a proclamation to celebrate the essential role of our school nurses. And yesterday was actually National School Nurse Day. And the theme for this year is "School Nurses Champion the Whole Student", which highlights the integral role that nurses play in facilitating the link between health and education to improve each child's academic, physical, and social, emotional development. "The extraordinary dedication of our school nurses to the health and needs of our students and staff has never been more apparent than this year. They've been in such an, I mean, they're always an integral part, but even more so this year in keeping our schools open and our students safe during this health emergency. Our school community extends our deep respect and gratitude for the invaluable work that our school nurses do every day on behalf of our students and staff. I also wanted to just say that on Monday, we began our full day of instruction, including lunch period. Through the hard work of our administrators and our staff, the new schedule has been successful. There were some adjustments that we needed as we worked through the first few days, but we've heard that the students are really doing great. One example is Mr. Colbert, our High School South interim principal, shared with us that the student representative at their PFA meeting expressed gratitude for our return to full day. The student started her update by expressing she was hesitant and disappointed by the schedule change at first. But after two days, she has seen a change in herself and her peers. She seemed to be authentically happy. In fact, we have all seen, we have seen an overall increase in in-person participation, actually, in the last couple of days. We compared the number of students attending in person today, this Thursday, to a Thursday, April 29th, two weeks ago. And there were 267 more students in attendance today in the district than there was on April 29th. And that's just great. I mean, that's what we were hoping for. And we're gonna, we're hoping that more students are gonna keep returning because we do see more students return every day. Lastly, I just wanna give you an update on the schedule for graduation and eighth grade promotion. These are gonna be posted on the website, but just so that you know they're out there. The eighth grade ceremonies are going to be on June 16th, which is a Wednesday. There's a rain date on June 17th because they are outside. Thompson and Bayshore are gonna be at High School South on football fields, and Thorne will be at High School North on the football field. Thompson will start at 8:30 a.m., Bayshore at 11 a.m., and Thorne at 1:30. The high school graduations will be on Friday, the 18th, and the rain date is the following Monday, the 21st. Each of those schools will hold their ceremony on their own football fields, and High School South will go first at 8:30 a.m., and High School North will be at 11. We're really looking forward to that event. So getting, again, another thing to try to get back to normal as normal as we can. And that's it.
Okay, I wanna go back to read our proclamation for Special Education Week. "The New Jersey School Boards Association is celebrating the 36th Annual Special Education Week in New Jersey. And whereas we acknowledge the need to provide all students with appropriate, high-quality special education services, and whereas we recognize the achievement of all students with disabilities and their dedication of their parents and teachers now. Therefore, be it resolved, the Middletown Township Board of Education do hereby proclaim, May 9th through May 15th, a Special Education Week in Middletown Township Public Schools." So thank you, everybody, for approving that. And now we're going to go on to our voting meeting. It's gonna be one, just one group from everything we have, from one to turn it over. One through nine, one through 10. One through 17. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Just one through 17. I'm gonna abstain on HR 2, 5, 11, and 21.
I'm also gonna abstain on HR 2, 5, 11, and 21. That's our voting session. All right. Any old business? Any new business?
I'd like to bring up some new business.
Sure.
I see everything taking place at a rapid pace now as far as no more masks that are being offered for vaccinated children in school now. I'm sorry, no more masks that are being offered in general from the CDC. I think it's a condition we really need to start having at a district to move forward and make some minor steps, even if they're not major. I'm aware there's an emergency order in place, a health emergency order from the governor, which is an executive order. But I think having little steps would be good at this point because we're seeing the spread is contained right now. And I think something as simple as getting rid of the health form in the morning, which I think is totally lunacy because of telling parents what to do and how to act and when their child is sick or not to go to school. So I'm asking the board to really start taking some more steps going forward to get us back where we are.
Sorry, Frank. You said that, you said the board or the administration?
I'm sorry, John?
You said the board? You want us to, what is it you want us to do?
What's your feeling, John?
No, I'm asking you, is it, are you asking the board or is you asking the administration? I'm not.
I was actually asking you right now, what's your opinion, what's your opinion you'd like to give it?
Are you asking, I don't even know what you're asking. That's what I'm saying. What are you?
I'd like to take some more aggressive steps, even if they're little, to show that we're making movement. We have been open the whole year. We've done a great job as a district since January getting this going. But we need to take a little bit more of a movement. The CDC just came out today, and the CDC stated that no more vaccinated-only people can be, have to wear masks indoors. So what are we gonna do as a district to actually make a change or a movement? Where's the voluntary form?
I don't think, my point was, I don't, I don't think the board's been overly, at least from when I, I've been involved in it. I don't think we've been, I don't think we've been overly involved in the recovery, the recovery plan at all.
I'm sorry?
I don't think we've been part of the decision-making in the recovery plan at all.
Well, maybe we need to be as a board, John, because we wanna make sure the school's running the right way.
Listen, Frank, I'm not arguing with you. I think, I think we've been pulled by.
I have four children in the school that have masks on their face all day long.
I'm not arguing, Frank. I'm just saying, you're kinda saying something that's really not what's occurring, right? What's occurring is the administration is making calls based on the recovery plan. And when you say since January, I think that's kind of insulting because.
I said since January, we've been doing a good job moving forward. The administration has done a good job moving forward. That's what I said. So, John, you have a, you have a, you have a child that's in the district, right?
But not, but no, whoa, 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 not just since January. This has been going on since the pandemic last March and September, and getting this district up and running, the administration should take all the credit for that, and teachers and power.
You know what, John, in my opinion, when we had eight cases in September, we had eight cases in September, and we had 11 in October? The district should have been open full-time then.
Frank, are you like, are you just sitting on a platform?
You gotta unmask our children. How about?
Members of the public, please, you can't shout randomly.
You haven't been part of the decision-making process, Frank. That's all I'm saying.
It's a power, you're right, John, but now I'm here.
What?
So I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment.
No.
Can you guys hear me?
No.
Can you guys hear me? Yeah. Sorry. Okay, I'd like to make a comment to Frank's point and to John's point. I understand, John, that you're saying that we haven't been involved, but at this point, we have reached the culmination of Phase Six successfully. And at some point, the board does need to get involved in the, in the moving forward plan. And I do agree that the time has come. We are at zero cases in the district today, and the numbers couldn't have been lower. The CDC is coming out with new guidelines, and I just think we really need to think about how we're moving forward and what kind of, and making sure, I really wanna make sure that we're not doing anything that causes disparity where there's vaccinated versus unvaccinated with different rules. I wanna make sure that we're not doing anything where vaccinated teachers are removing their mask, but we're still forcing children to mask up. So I think these discussions need to happen.
Yeah. If, if. So just so I understand, so the recommendation is that you were saying is, is that we want the board to be more involved going forward now that the recovery plan, as originally written was, is.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what you're asking. Okay, because the way you phrased it was sounding like there's something we should have been doing in the meantime. So I.
No, not at all. We haven't been able to do anything.
Right.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
All right. The new guidance, which came out today, this afternoon, actually, from the CDC, specifically applies to vaccinated people. And if you read, if you read thoroughly, it indicates that we have to still comply with any state mandate or any guidance, which is promulgated by the New Jersey Department of Health. All right? So that this administration is compelled to comply with existing current guidance given to us by the Department of Health and the governor's office.
Tom, how many kids you have wrapped up in school? They won't.
Tom, I completely agree with you. I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
I understand what you're saying. That's the guidance. I completely agree with you. But what I think that we do need to think about is in cases where the district might be, might have been previously operating as there was a need to operate with an overabundance of caution in some cases. I think we need to be very careful that we also are not pushing an overabundance of caution on our children. And one example is making sure that the. And one example is making sure that the CDC and our guidelines recommend no masks during aerobic activity. Yet, we still see that some classes are, are having gym with masks on. So in cases like that, we still see special needs is an exemption, but special needs kids are still masked all day long. We are going on 14 months, 15 months now, of kids not being able to see their teacher's mouths move, not being able to form words, not being able to have facial expressions. For a kid with special needs or a kid with learning disabilities or English as a second, second language, that is a very detrimental piece of their education, and we are seeing massive learning loss. So I think, and I don't want to speak for Frank, but I think we are really just advocating for some common sense, some relaxation of anything that was an overabundance where we went over the line on caution. At this point, I think we have to be responsive to the temperature of, of the, the pandemic as whatever is still existing of it. And I think we need to be very careful that we're also not doing any harm to children. And, you know, for those of you who were not in our policy meeting the other night, I made a statement about I will not be complicit in hurting children. So if we have children whose parents are advocating for the masks to be removed because they have health issues, I think we need to not hold that process up. I don't believe there is any executive order that asks for a doctor's note from a child's doctor. I don't believe there's anything where there has to be a fight between a parent's desire to protect their child's health and our district overarching, overreaching that. So I think, you know, we're, we're kind of starting, needing to start these discussions and make sure that we are not also erring on the side of hurting children.
So can I just say something a second? So to Jackie's point before about medical exemptions, I mean, this existed before the pandemic. And any type of medical exemption that was needed, you always required a doctor's note. That's not putting any new onus on parents. And I agree that if there is a medical issue for any child, that avenue of getting some kind of doctor's note and then having that exempted should go forward. If it hadn't gone forward, it should go forward now. But I think the one thing that, you know, Tom has said is right, we have this new guidance that just came out this afternoon. I think, you know, we still have to see sort of what's going to happen here in New Jersey in terms of the executive order, if that's going to change. But then I have a procedural question to ask now, perhaps Bruce can sort of answer this question for me. If we are now going to try and actually change something in terms of what we want to see happen within the district and it now conflicts with an existing state order, A, how are we able to do that? And B, what is the right procedure in order to have those discussion and then make those changes? Is that something then that needs to go back to the policy committee? And you're actually talking about making the changes in the restart and recovery plan? Or is this just something that we can just, all of a sudden, anybody can raise at any board meeting without any pre-discussion? And trying to figure out sort of where we're going to go from here?
It depends on, on what the issue is, what the particular change you're trying to make is. So, but generally speaking, it probably should go through policy because you have an adopted policy. Your restart and recovery plan was adopted as a policy, so it should be an amendment to that. Some things may be able to be done administratively without a policy, so it kind of depends on what the item is. Then to answer the second part of the question, the, the district still is bound by the governor's executive orders. And Executive Order 175 does require, with, with exceptions, masks on students in class.
Let me say something to the Executive Order 175. If we don't, if he takes off the emergency health emergency and he still has the Executive Order 175, that's not a law anymore. Because under the emergency health, now it's a law that he can act.
The executive-
Takes that health emergency order or 175 is really just a guideline.
I don't know if that's the case. It depends on how the public health emergency would be rescinded. It depends on the wording of what he does.
I guess our governor thinks that the air is different across the whole country.
It is. It's different. When you sit down and stand up. The executive order is not a law.
Anybody else? Seeing no other new business, open it up for a public comment. We just asked that you go to the mic, give your name and address and thank you.
And you, when you take the mic, you just want to switch it on and when it goes green, you're good to go.
Do I have to stand back here?
Uh, yes.
Red. It'll be weird. Hi. My name is Jen Brown. I live at 15 Corbett in Middletown. I am a mom of three children in the district. And I'm also a nurse for 27 years. I've been a nurse in COVID, COVID ICU, actually. So I have a lot more experience than most of the people in this room. So I understand the policy comes from the governor about the masks, and I understand that parents are very upset about the masks. And I understand why it was put in place in the first place. I also actually want to backtrack for a quick minute and just say congratulations to all of you for getting the schools open full-time. I think we should commend them. I also would like to point out to the public that most schools aren't open full-time. So we do have a great board, so I'd like to thank you. But when it comes to the masks, masking children, I think that we really need to take a step back and understand that the pandemic is really over. Is there anybody in this room that really thinks that we're in a pandemic right now? Raise your hand.
Ma'am, excuse me, excuse me, you got to address the board. You can't make a presentation.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know how to do this. I can't remember.
I know, I know.
Just address us, yeah.
You're not in trouble.
No, you're right.
Yeah, yeah. No, just the way you're talking around and asking the audience questions, that's not allowed. You gotta just talk.
I'm sorry. I don't know.
That's okay.
Yeah, I've never, ever, ever been here, ever.
That's a good thing, I guess, right?
I guess. So does anybody really think that there, are you allowed to ask questions as you go or save them to the end?
Well, it's public comment, so you're just really making-
Oh, comment, okay. So, and I'm talking to you. So really, I think that we need to just address the fact that, you know, parents are really upset about masks. And I understand that. And it's the reason being is because really the reality is, is that the pandemic is over. I think we're at like 425 days of 15 to flatten the curve. We did a great job, but we need to start asking questions about, I guess, the policy, executive orders, as we've been discussing. But where is the policy on the masks for schools? Where is that written? Has it been given to parents to read? Have we consented to the mask policy? Because I've never seen it. When are mask breaks in school? Are they regulated? Are they each class? How does that work? I have older children. My daughter is 13, my son is 17. They're not suffocating as much as a six-year-old or a five-year-old. But we need facial expression. We need happiness. We need joy. We need to see the teacher. The psychological damage that we're doing to children right now is going to be irreversible. Long-term access to masks from children is something that's unforeseen. Granted, COVID was unforeseen. It was real. I'm never going to stand here and pretend to you that it wasn't. I've held the hands of dying people. I've called them. I was there. I wore an N95, however, because that's what works. There are over 2,700 studies on PubMed.gov, if you want to look it up right now, that show you that masks are ineffective. You have a quarantine policy in your school system that's ineffective. It was ineffective, and my question would be to you, you had a quarantine policy where two children are masked. One was positive, the other was exposed, six feet apart, behind plexiglass. But they were masked and you sent one home. My question to you is, how many of those children were quarantined in all of Middletown Township? And how many of them turned positive? I'd like that answer. How many of them were positive when you sent them home for 14 days and removed them from school? Remove them from sports, remove them from normalcy? How many turned positive? Does anybody know? Also, how many children in Middletown School District, I don't even know how many children there are, but you guys probably know, how many children were hospitalized with COVID? And how many died? I'd like to know that too. I'd also like to know, once we do unmask teachers in classrooms, are we going to leave the students masked? How will that work? So these are answers that parents need to know. Because we do need to unmask our children. It's time. And I do believe if anyone could get it done, it's this board. You got the school open full-time. So we have faith in you. But we need you to be logical and to think about the children. Every one of you took this position because something in your heart said, you want to do better for this town. Do it. Be better.
Thank you for all you do in your profession.
Thank you. I just hand that off now?
Yeah, if somebody else wants to.
Good job for your first time.
I'm sorry. I usually walk.
I'm not a good speaker.
We have, we're gonna go with someone from online going, I will let you go.
People on the Zoom, so we're gonna take one from the Zoom before.
I'm sorry, I'm so engaged at this part. I get that there's a line.
Next is Catrice, her last name, so please provide that for us.
Catrice, are you there?
I apologize, I didn't hear you. My kids were talking. I just, are we allowed to ask a question?
It's public comment, so you can just, you know, make your comments.
Oh, I was just wondering about the graduation, if they knew how many guests were allowed and if the kids were supposed to go back to school? If all that information would be posted somewhere? Also, I had the same question as Jen Brown. With all the kids who have been quarantined due to exposure, the nurse should have all those, all that data as far as how many children actually tested positive. And if that information can be released to the, to the public.
Thank you, Catrice. Catrice, can you state your full name?
Catrice Cannon.
Okay.
I have, thank you.
Thanks, Catrice. Okay.
Is it green?
I think it's not instantaneously turned green. It takes like-
You've got it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jessica Brink. My address, address is 8 Gordon Court in Port Monmouth. First of all, I want to say, I know you guys didn't sign up for this. Nobody wants to be on the Board of Education in the middle of a pandemic, so I empathize with you. These are probably decisions that you probably don't want to have to even deal with. But that being said, you all took an oath to the Constitution briefly. You swore or affirmed an oath to uphold the Constitution. And I'm assuming you probably all have kids. What's the first thing that you pray for when your child is delivered? You want to hear them take a breath. What's the last act that you take before you die? Take a breath. So when we're putting masks on a child, we're blocking their ability to breathe. And I think we can all agree that that is a right. It is a God-given right to be able to breathe. So when you took the oath to the Constitution, you took an oath to uphold our God-given rights. It's, it's a maximum law that says ignorance of the law is no excuse. If you don't know the law, it's not an excuse. Do you know the Article 6 section of the Constitution says, it's called the supremacy clause? And it says that the Constitution is supreme. If any state law is in conflict with the Constitution, it's null and void. So right now, what we have going on is a governor who is issuing executive orders. The governor is part of the executive branch. His role is to execute. His role is not to legislate. So he has essentially been legislating for a year and a half now. And he is infringing on the rights of our children. Frank was talking about the Emergency Health Powers Act. That's the authority that the governor uses to write these mandates. If you look at the Emergency Health Powers Act, now, I'm a nurse, so I dug into this stuff very deeply. And I've been a school nurse for a period of time, so I know what's going on in the schools. And I was fired because I pushed back. We won't go into which district that was. It was Middletown. Anyhow, the Emergency Health Powers Act gives the commissioner authority to quarantine. The only way you can lawfully quarantine someone is through a court order. The only way you can lawfully mandate a medical intervention is through a court order. It's very clear. But the fact that we don't know our rights and, and, you know, if you swore oath to the Constitution and you're choosing to enforce these unlawful mandates, where does the liability go? And at the end of the day, each one of you are liable. And some people say, oh, but there's this sovereign immunity and it's the board, it's the this, it's the that, we're just following orders. At the end of the day, there needs to be somebody liable on the other side. And I'm putting that on you guys to, to really understand what is going on here and the harm this is causing our children. It's, it's a challenge. As a school nurse, I worked for a certain amount of months. And I also was in the military. I know what boot camp is like. It felt like boot camp. People yelling at the kids, get your ass going, six feet apart. This is not a school environment. How, I don't understand how this is allowed to continue. And I'm putting it, I'm asking you, because at the end of the day, you're responsible for what happens in these schools. Please, consider the parents out here, the moms that are concerned about their kids. None of these women have given you consent to mask our children. Where does that consent come from? You're forcing medical interventions on children. Where do you get the authority to do that? That's my question.
Yes, again, thank you for all you do as a nurse.
Absolutely. I went to high school with, actually, I went with your son from elementary school all the way up.
I recognize the face.
Actually, I don't have a last name. Share that with us for the record.
Beth?
That just needs to un.
Yo.
Oh, Chris.
Yes, it's good. Yep, no, we'll go, we'll go back to the mic.
It's like a three to five second delay.
I don't know.
Put it to the eye.
Okay.
I'll leave it the green light.
It's not, yeah. It'll turn green in a second.
It turns green in a second. Yeah, try it, right. You're the professional. Is it barking? That's not my voice. Oh, sorry. Okay, so my name is Anissa Mendez. I am, I've never done this before either. I live at 276 Main Street, brand new to the neighborhood, about a year. I'm very emotional about this. I have already emailed you the pictures of my daughter. She has, she got a bad case of eczema from wearing the mask. It literally took over her face. My daughter is a wonderful kid. She is an A student. We're very busy in the house. I don't always check her home. And she does everything that she is supposed to do on her own. There's nothing more that she wants than to go to school. We, I, after three months of healing and recovering, I allowed her to go back. I think it was like two days out of the week, and she was on and off. And on occasion, this would flare up. But she was determined to continue with her education, go to school. She recently told me that Thorn Middle School and all the middle schools were going to be going back full-time. And she would have a choice to go back the entire time, the whole day. Obviously, I was concerned about that as her parent because I, because of her health. And so we came to the discussion and it was very painful because I didn't want her to go back to endure the mask and to endure this again. And she cried. And there is nothing more that I want to do than we all want to do, is to give our children very best. We want them to have the best. She deserves better than this. And the reason I'm here to tell you this story is because somebody has to be our voice. Is it going to be you? Who is going to stick up for the kids that cannot tolerate the mask? Now, I'm not here to get into the law or other, whatever it is. I'm here as a parent. This is not tolerable. This is my daughter. This is real. And it's not asthma and other things that people talk about. No, this is very physical. It's very uncomfortable. She deserves better. And we decided to pull her from school so that she can do remote learning. And we have the support of the principal and everybody has been very nice and supportive and but we have a choice. We have a choice. And COVID is not, is no longer an issue. I understand that it was. I understand why we did this. But we have to be strong and stand for our children. And this is just not working. It is not.
Hi, Vera Pasecki, Ashire Drive, Middletown. I wanted to get back to, I don't know who made the initial comment about temperature checks and the health forms. Given that Disney World is doing away with temperature checks and, and a lot of the districts around us have done away with the health forms, I, I think that's a logical thing that we could look at doing away with. I might be the only parent I know that has children in secondary schools that does the form herself for her kids. Most of them just have their kids kind of fill it out and hit no, 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 if we were all being honest. So I know Little Silver and some other districts have done away with, actually done, done away with it quite a while ago. And, and again, putting the responsibility on the parents of doing the right things as we asked them to do in the past as well. I'd also like to jump on the bandwagon about sharing the data with the public. Not only as it relates to the, the quarantine and, and whether we had positives coming out of all of those children that were quarantined, but also I would love to see any information on, on in-school transmission rates. I think that would be helpful to the public. I know there might be some that we're not sure of, but we can put that in undetermined category. Also, on the masks, I have a daughter with special needs who's fully included in gen ed. This is her first full week. And I feel the pain of some of the parents. She has broken out. I think the longer day has caused her sensitive skin to break out the tip of her nose and it's all around the edge of the masks. My son in high school is fine with his mask. But i- if we truly do need to retain those masks, I would like to know what the strategy is on mask breaks now that we've gone to a full day. I was happy to drive by Thompson today and I saw kids out on the lawn having a class in a circle with no masks on outside. I thought that was wonderful. But I think we definitely, at a minimum, have to get some mask breaks now that we've gone to a longer day. Appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Anybody inside want to speak? You thought it was going to be green, didn't you? She was all smiling, which got her.
Hello?
Hi, everybody. My name is Diana Ogrosso. I live at 257 Leonardville Road. I have two children in the district. One actually is being taught by my sister, my hero. We pulled our eight, nine, and 10-year-olds, I'm sorry, we're a little nervous, from the schools this year because we felt that, you know, we could homeschool them better. We didn't want them sitting in schools all day with a mask. And then we wanted them to have some sort of normalcy in their lives and it's worked out well. But we shouldn't have to make that decision between the taxes we pay and our society. This can't be normal anymore. I also have a four-year-old who goes to pre-K. He is, he's in full-day pre-K at Albany, which just went to full day in February. He wears a mask all day and it's pretty sad because he just told me that he finally saw his friend in his face the other day. You know, this is doing a lot more damage than we think. I am also a nurse. I've seen this. COVID is real. However, and our initial response was correct. Nobody knew what to expect. However, this has gone on too long and like, the other lady said, I'm sorry, forgetting me. You know, it comes time when it is our responsibility. It's our responsibility to stop looking at why you're making these decisions. Not just because somebody else said so. You know, as a nurse, I'm trained to look for evidence-based practice and I feel like that's gone out the window. The evidence-based practice to me says that masks are useless, okay? And we're masking our children every day. So somebody eventually is going to be liable for this. So now's the time, now that we're confronting you with it, to start thinking about this and somebody has to take responsibility. I shouldn't have to be looking to move out of state. States that have common sense legislation like Florida, you know, their rates are simp, are better than a lot of other states and they've been open. Their children have been in school since September, full-time. I have family there. They've been in school. Next year, they're not going to have masks at all. There's no ma- mask mandates for the schools. Uncorrect. Some school districts are fighting back on that, but we need to be looking at this. You know, this is a serious issue and I, I just, I thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. And again, thank you for your profession.
Michelle Collins.
South?
Hi, it's Michelle Collins. I have two kids at South. I just had a few comments. I just want to say the pandemic is not over. I, it seems like, I don't know, people are kind of in denial. It's, you know, it has gotten better, but it's definitely not over. People are still dying. Masks are not ineffective or useless. They've saved thousands of lives and will continue to save thousands of lives. I just hope that the administration will follow CDC guidelines going forward and not, you know, emotions or perceived inconvenience of wearing a mask. There are many parents in this district who, you know, believe in science and evidence-based, you know, studies. And I just hope that everyone still continues to keep health and safety of everybody in mind and follow the science. Thanks.
You should stay alert.
Guys, please, no.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Isaacson. I live at 499 Roxbury Road. I have two children that go to baby elementary school. I've kept them out up until February when I started seeing depression set in in my nine-year-old daughter. And then I let her go because I realized she needed to be social with her friends. This week has been really hard because my oldest, he's 11 and fifth grade. He doesn't want to go because he can't tolerate masks. He does have asthma. So with this whole vaccination thing coming around with, oh, now you don't have to wear your mask, isn't that going to be discrimination? Like, there's no way in hell I'm giving my kids that shit. No way. Of getting vaccinated with COVID-19. Four, that's too many for one person. I'm like appalled. This does not, this goes above you. I know your hands are tied. It goes to the teachers' union and the governor. That is horrendous. And if you're going to sit on this board and you're not going to fight for our kids, then leave. You want to do what's right and make the right decisions for our children and know that masks are harming them. And for the lady that just spoke, there's plenty of scientific information out there that show you masks do nothing.
Yes, that's right. That's right.
People need to do their homework. I printed out all these pages. And I was going to go, you know, give you a little education on it. But I know that your hands are tied because you can't make that choice to take the masks off our kids. And I know that some of you are all about the teachers' union and it's not about our children. It's about politics. And it's horrible. Our kids are suffering. It's going to be horrible for them as they get older. Who's going to pay for the psychiatrist? All these kids are in the school yelling, put your mask on, cover your nose. I take my son to Target there for 30 minutes, right in the face, doesn't feel good, feels like he's going to pass out. I tell him, Riley, take your mask off. I don't want him, Mom, because I don't want somebody yelling at me. Are you kidding me? I'm his mother. When I had my kids, I vowed to protect them and to love them unconditionally. And now for somebody to come in and say, oh, they have to wear a mask all day. Bullshit. I'm beyond pissed off. This is not fair. Now my son's supposed to go to, to middle school next year. He has an IP. This has put him back so much that there's no way he's ready for middle school. So now I'll get, I'll go to the IP meeting and I'll be told, oh, enroll him in something over the summer. Oh, great. So he can go when it's hot out, he's sitting somewhere else, get more instruction and have to wear a mask. That's not going to happen. So now I'll pay out of pocket to have him tutored because I don't pay enough in my taxes. Because the right things aren't being done for our kids. Those health forms in the morning are a freaking nightmare. Half the time I forget to fill them out, send my kid to school, oh, I gotta go to room 11. So now you put my kid in room 11 and God forbid there's some kid in there that actually is sick. Now they're exposed. So now they get exposed, now stay home for 14 days. That seems right. This, if you're not going to help us parents get what needs to be done, then please remove yourself from the board.
Next is John. I don't have a last name, so just provide it for the record.
I hate that word. I'm sorry, but that word is so disrespectful. Talking about the advocacy there. Anybody else in here want to get up? We're taking insight comment.
Hi, my name is Michelle McBurney, 164 Monmouth Avenue, Lenox Highlands. My children were in the district. And unfortunately, when I saw the plan that was dropped on everyone's laps, I knew there was no way the school was going to open. And I had to take my kids out of school that they loved and teachers that they loved and a fantastic principal and wonderful, wonderful families. And they had to start over. We've come a long way. And that woman who just called in, Michelle Collins, has a lot of nerve implying that the people here and the nurses that spoke and have been face-to-face with people who've died of COVID, that she knows more and to imply that we are not informed and we don't know the science. I'm not going to let anyone else silence me anymore that I don't know science. I'm educated. I'm informed. And the fact is, the pandemic is over. My husband also treats COVID patients. And we know the science and we're following it. So people like Michelle Collins should stay home and live in their cocoon. And the rest of us are getting out and living. Now, one more thing to say, I understand that it's been hard for you. And I realize that as parents, we've had it difficult. A lot of you are parents and you've also been thrown unbelievable and unacceptable requirements by the leadership of this state. And I'm sorry that you had to go through that too. So I want you to partner with us. I want you to join us and let's go back to the unions and let's go back to the leadership and say, enough. You cannot throw on the lap of the board members across New Jersey and the teachers who've had it the worst and tell them to do it again and figure it out. That is their job. That is their responsibility. And I know that you want this too. So let's go back to the unions and let's go back to the governor and tell him, enough, enough. Don't do this in September again. And not let us figure out what to do. I'm sorry, but I think it's time and I can't wait to tell Michelle Collins to her face.
Hello?
Holly?
Oh, hi. Holly Voat, Stavola Road. I don't, I just wanted to make a comment, just watching over the past year, what has already been a very divisive year to begin with, let alone throwing in a pandemic. I myself am not above having gotten into squabbles with people, especially when it comes to teachers. I have a soft spot for teachers, especially teachers in this township. But I just wanted to make a quick observation of comments that I've read on Middletown's different Middletown Facebook groups and pages, just to show where hopefully we can all find a way to meet in the middle on some of this. But, you know, I see comments, I won't make my child get a shot of poison, met with, I won't send my child to school with children whose parents don't believe in vaccines. All of these teachers are lazy, met with, all of these parents are lazy. If you're nervous to send your kids to school full day, then keep them home. Met with, if you don't want to get vaccinated, keep your kid home. If you don't believe in masks, you're dumb. If you don't believe masks are suffocating kids, you're dumb. I just want us to remember that when this is over, we all have to look each other in the eyes and our children are watching. And again, I'm not, I, I myself have gotten into these arguments with people and I look back at it now and I wish that I had had a little bit more of an open mind to their plight and their side. Just remember, there's always someone with the complete opposite view of yours who feels just as strongly. And we, I, you know, whatever your beliefs are, those are yours. But let's try to remember that we have to be a township. We have to come together after this and be able to be proud of how we handled this. And that's all. I just want to thank you all for everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Inside comment?
Did everyone who want to speak, she spoke already, everybody who have at least one chance to speak before we.
So anybody else that wants to speak from inside before Jessica speaks a second time?
I've got so much to say.
Okay, Jessica. Technology.
It must be all my energy. It's supposed to be on the lines, not the. No, switch it all the way over. It'll turn red and then it goes green. Now it's green. Okay. Do I need to say my name and address again?
No, wait, no.
I just wanted to point out, the CDC actually does not recommend screening children. I can, I'll send you the documentation. The CDC does not recommend screening children. If they claim, they admittedly put out there. If they claim, they admittedly put out there that it does cause harm because it can cause harm because it stigmatizes children. When I was a school nurse, I really wanted to point out the the stuff that doesn't make sense, right? So kids would come in in the middle of January from outside. And now, mind you, the thing that we would use was called the temperature gun. It looks like a gun. And we would point this gun at a child's head. I absolutely refused to do it. Two years ago, if you said the word gun in school, the cops would be called. But now every day, kids are being greeted in the morning with a temperature gun. And when you put the gun at the head and you get a reading of ninety-two degrees, which is incompatible with life, we send the kid off to the classroom. And then twenty minutes later, the kid warms up to one hundred and two degrees. Does that make sense? It makes no sense. So when I challenged my fellow nurses and said, does this make sense, they would say, we're just smelling rules. I don't care about your rules. They don't make any sense. So I'm asking you to consider those things. Like if things don't make sense, you can't enforce them. If you're saying to yourself, what's going on here? It just doesn't make sense. And there was a third thought that I can't think of right now. Yeah, so the CDC does not recommend screening. And putting these kids in a quarantine room because mom didn't fill out the quarantine form is preposterous. And you're essentially holding my kid captive because I didn't fill out a form. Those kids are suffering. They're wondering why they can't get to class. And there were kids that broke down in tears because they're being stuck in this room, a quarantine room, because mom didn't fill out the form. And then we're calling mom. We're calling dad. We're texting everybody. We're trying to get somebody on the phone. It doesn't make sense. I'm just asking you, think about these things logically. And if they don't make sense, you have to push back. That was the other thought. Anyhow, so I put in some public records requests. They're really powerful. I put one into Middletown and I got some pushback. So I'm asking, if I'm asking for things, if I'm asking for emails, if I'm asking for redacted quarantine spreadsheets, that sort of thing, and I'm getting pushback? What, if everything's happening above board, why isn't we pushing back? I'm just curious. Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Sue Griffin, Middletown. First off, I'd like to say thank you very much for, Mrs. Walker, for mentioning the nurses tonight. Our district wouldn't be the same without the wonderful nurses that we have. And thank you for all the nurses who spoke this evening. Tonight is Nurse Appreciation Week in Middletown, because you're all out there and I appreciate that also. And I too am one of the nurses. I'm a nurse also. I've been one for thirty-three years. And I've worked in schools, I've worked pediatrics, and I've also been a board member, as some of you know. Everything that I've done, I've always done with the nursing process in mind. Assessing, planning, intervening, and evaluating. I've always looked at the data when I'm assessing. And I've always looked at the data again when I'm evaluating. I would urge you all to look at the data when you're doing both ends of that spectrum. But in the middle, please remember when planning and intervening, to look at all children. Some of the kids out there are afraid not to wear the mask. And keep those kids in mind because you represent all of them. And keep in mind what you're doing for those kids and how you're going to take their needs into consideration also. Because your job is to represent everybody. After that, once again, I'd just like to say thank you to all of our nurses because they really are superheroes. They've done a fabulous job this year. This year has been unprecedented. And from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank them for the work they've done twenty-four seven this year. Thank you very much.
Yes, Emily?
I have one other thing. Do I have to go up there? Can I just talk?
No, you have to go up. Sorry. Because it's on video, so I'm sorry.
What is the procedure for cleaning at the school? Are they supposed to be? Sorry, can you just please state your name again? Jeanne Isaacson, four ninety-nine Rockstar Road, Belford. My kids came home, I think it was last week, and they said, oh, one of the teachers didn't feel well, so she was sent home. And then the janitor continued to spray the room. And the whole side of the building smelled to the point where my daughter was at the end of the hallway and she said, Mom, the smell was so bad. So I wrote to the principal and I said, why are you spraying the classrooms where children are still in the building? It can't wait until they leave? And this is when it was still half day. And I said, because the smell is obviously strong enough to where my daughter smelled it at the end of the hallway. My son actually was in the class next door and he said, yeah, Mom, the smell's really bad. And I'm like, so not only do they have a mask on, now they have to smell this horrendous cleaning solution, whatever it is. So the principal just sent me the information of whatever the solution is that they spray. And she said the windows were open, the doors closed, no kids went in the classroom afterwards. But I said, why does it have to be done when children are in school? As if we don't have to worry enough now to what masks are gonna do to them long term if, you know, damaging their lungs or premature death. But now we're gonna add some chemical smells to, you know, the air that they're breathing while they're in school for a happy day. I'm not, I don't understand that. Is there any reasoning behind that? It can't wait? Is there? I mean, I thought they came to the conclusion that COVID doesn't live that long on surface.
Hey, Letitia?
Yeah, hi. Letitia, I'm Letitia's husband. I'm on a computer. I'm on Oaks Ave. I just wanna say, I'm very disappointed. As a child of immigrants, my parents moved here and they worked so that they could be part of what people back home call the American dream. I thought the American dream was good education, good work, good money, and living in the best country in the goddamn world. And I'm at tears. The amount of miseducation, lack of education, I feel from the room there. There is a virus going on outside. People, people are dying. You guys, you guys say you're worried about your kids. Well, you should be worried about the people in a hospital room that are there because of a virus they got, because of people like you who refuse to wear a mask. A mask is what's saving us. And you guys coming on here and saying that you want to, like, confront somebody like Michelle Collins, who seems very smart, educated woman, who knows what she's talking about. And you guys saying you believe the science? What is the science? The nonsense that the media's, like, feeding you? What is it? Fox News? No, no, let me finish.
Let him have it, let him...
Let me finish. I'm disappointed. People are dying. Okay, sure, I got rashes from my mask. Your kids might get rash from their mask. It happens. It happens. You know what shouldn't be happening? People dying. So if we make a commitment, we get the vaccine, we put our mask on, we do our part, then your kids won't have to wear that mask in a bit. But the fact that y'all have not been willing to make this commitment for this long is the reason that they still have to wear it. Stop feeding this information to your kids. Stop saying your kid is gonna be affected by this in years to come. No, they won't. They'll forget about it. It's crazy. I mean, they won't, they'll never forget about it. This is experience of a lifetime. We're in the middle of a global pandemic. How often does that happen? No, 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 I don't wanna hear it. Get the facts. I don't want you guys all on Fox News and all that. Let's go to actual sources, New York Times, government websites. We shouldn't even be having this conference. I'm gonna be fully honest here.
Letitia, you need to address the board, please, not the audience.
Yes, I'm sorry, but to the board, from what I heard, some people were saying, remove yourself from the board if you believe we should be wearing masks. No. Remove yourself from the board if you believe people shouldn't be wearing masks and making that that people are in danger. Please, trust the facts. And I'm gonna be honest, I'm not from New Jersey. I'm from Boston. I just found this stream, but I had to talk some sense to you people.
Are you kidding me?
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
That's the hard, that's the hard part about being online. You don't know...
Hi, Ted Brown, Middletown. I think that when that guy just called in, I think that that's actually a really big part of what's wrong. It's a big separation, me versus you, mask versus no mask, vaccine versus no vaccine. And I think that's a really, really big problem that we all need to address. No one here is not following the science. This has been a really long progression. I've been there. So no one can understand how someone looks when they have COVID in an ICU. It's horrific. But it was last year. March of twenty twenty. April and May. And this was scary and unprecedented. What you did was good. It was right in the beginning. But now it's time to end it. We need to bring back normalcy and life. People are scared to death, like that guy. And I get it. I don't blame him. I don't laugh at him. I don't think it's funny. I think that we've seen so much on television. When in your lifetime have you seen commercials about vaccines and go get a beer and get a hamburger? It's a joke now. Now we're doing the same thing with masks. So we're kind of at a position where we just don't know how to end it. So I don't really blame you because it's everywhere, all the time. I believe, though, we have been molded into this moment in time, right now, right here. We are segregating people. Good versus evil, mask versus no mask, vaccine versus no vaccine. Sit in this section at the Yankee Stadium, sit in that section if you don't. Haven't we all gotten past this? This is disgusting. It's disgusting and we need to end it. And we start here. It's hard. But like Frank said, you start small, right? Let's be realistic. We can't just go in and rip masks off all the kids. I don't think any parent here is thinking that's what we're gonna do, although that's what we want, but we know it's not reality. We have to live in reality. This was a real pandemic. It was real. This really happened last year. Now it's time to move forward. We're not gonna walk around in masks for the rest of our lives. We're not gonna judge people on whether or not you're vaccinated. I'm not asking you if you had a mammogram or a colonoscopy every day. People are saying the weirdest things. We gotta get a grip. People have to get a grip. Of reality. We need it. It's enough. We're separating people. This isn't normal. That call made me sick. This makes me sick. Enough is enough. We need to find our humanity. These are crimes against humanity to these children. We are torturing these children. They don't know what's up and what's down, what's inside and what's outside. And it's scary. They're scared. We are grownups and look how we act. How do you think they're gonna act to each other? Grownups don't know how to act. Get it together! End this. Stop it. Stop judging each other. We've come a long way. This is America. Stop it. There was a pandemic, yes, and it's okay to be scared. It's okay to say you're scared. I was scared. I cried every night. I'd sit in my bathtub and say, what on earth is happening in this world right now? I say it now. It's sad, scary, and bad. But we need to do something about it and we can't keep judging each other like this. This town needs to come together. You're the Board of Education. It's your job. It's your job to make small movements in the right direction and that's what we're asking for. We're not asking for miracles. We're not asking you to be unrealistic. We're not asking for crazy things. We're asking you to make progression to get the masks off the children. You've already done wonders. You opened a school. I'm proud of you. You did a great job. You could do this. This call, this nonsense, this has to stop because the vaccines are next. And I'm telling you, it's gonna get hairy and ugly and scary and bad. More is to come. People are gonna judge you everywhere you go. We need, as Americans, to come together and end this. We can start here in Middletown. We can do it together.
Hello, Jack? Jack? Is he muted? Okay. Go to the next one?
Yes.
Who is it?
Iron Jones.
Go to the next one? Yes. Hello?
Go to the next one? Hello, can you guys hear me?
Hello?
Hello, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Tara and I live in Middleton, right next to Oak Grace.
This is, this is Middletown, so I think you're calling into the wrong town. Go to the next one?
No. He said Middleton. Maybe he meant Middleton. Don't cut him off, Joan.
He didn't say Middletown, Tom.
I understand that, Joan. And maybe he mispronounced something. A lot of people tonight, a lot of people, members of the board have mispronounced.
There's a lot of hackers.
Yeah, a lot of hackers.
Tommy didn't really try to say too much. He muted himself.
Okay, thank you.
Him another shot, but he's gotta speak up.
Get his address?
Yeah, he said Middleton.
We get his address? Full address. Iroh Anderson.
Yeah.
This is Joe.
Hello? No there? Okay. Nobody's there, Tom.
Understood.
Hello, Bill?
How y'all doing? This is Bill Sherman.
Hi, could you just state your address, please?
I live in River Plaza. I live on Mannan Street. So I'm definitely not one of these fake guys that Tom fought for real.
Glad to hear it.
That the rest of us obviously know is fake. So I've been listening and I gotta tell you, man, I'm, I feel bad for our kids. We've been making them wear these masks and, you know, missing out on life, missing out on sports, falling behind on education. And at the end of the day, it's real simple. If you're that scared and you're so scared for your kids and these masks work so well, then what do you care? You're wearing the mask. Don't worry about what we're doing. Don't worry about what we're doing. You wear your mask, you stay in your lane, and we'll wear our, we won't wear our mask, we'll stay in our lane, all right? It's real simple because I'm not letting my kid wear this mask no more, all right? It's against the science, all right? There's no science to it at all. If the people can go to a UFC event with thirty-two thousand people in Florida and there's no mass infection, what the hell is the problem letting our kids go to school and not wear a mask when they're trying to play sports? I don't know, man. I think y'all need to stop being scared and stop listening to the media that is literally trying to paralyze you with fear. Stop paralyzing our kids. Now I'm amped up. I'm good. Now I'm amped up. I'm good.
Next, Chris.
Melanie Dorsey.
Melanie?
Hi, um, I live on, uh, Clinton Ave. Uh, I would just like to say that obviously if the government mandates.
Could you say your full name? Say your name?
Melanie Dorsey. My wife's account.
From Mexico.
No, from Mexico, my wife's account.
Oh my God, they keep hacking you in.
Yeah. Everybody else?
There's others that we've tried, they didn't say anything.
Right.
There's none more?
No new ones, just the ones that have been muted, I guess.
Okay, fair. Okay, is, there is anyone else in here that would like to speak before we end?
I'm Kelly Ianon. I live at 237 King Fisher Drive. We keep hearing a lot about following the science. This is exactly what happened with my daughter. I got a call, um, on a Tuesday that she had been exposed, um, the last Wednesday. And just, you know, because we keep hearing, you know, from some people, children are superstitious. It was the teacher. Not mad at him. He went out with his buddies and somebody was sick. I didn't know. Okay, no big deal. But follow the science. That's what we keep hearing. That next weekend after I got the call, we were going on college visit for her. We had been told by Missouri Cordia University, we had to have negative COVID tests. Now, because of just things in our lives, we went at three separate times, three separate locations. Myself, my husband, my daughter. Every single one of us was negative. But she couldn't go back to school. She missed part of her bowling season, was incredibly upset about that. Now she's in softball. I can't get her to go back because she's terrified. I'll sit near the wrong person and I'll get, I'll get a close contact and I'll be off the softball. She already missed a whole year. She missed the trip to Florida that the softball team raised money for. You know, I'm not gonna get the kid to go back, but we, here, follow the science, follow the science. Well, I had three tests that were science that said we were all negative. You know, we, we have to start looking at this stuff and like Frank said, make little steps. Nobody's saying overnight, but make the little steps.
Anyone else? No, it's about, in here, yeah, it's the same people online, right? Just checking.
Hi, I was in planning, I was speaking. I'm Christina Bernard. I live on Lengy Street 303 in Belford. Um, I have two children that go to Middletown School, one in high school and one in elementary school. Um, my high school daughter is still not back from school. She's still all virtual. Um, I couldn't get her to come back. She's doing very well virtual right now, so we're rolling with it. My little one, I kept her home because I did not want her wearing a mask all day, half day at all. I don't think it's okay for them to be wearing masks at that age. I don't think it's good for their health. I don't think that they work. I mean, these are the masks that we wear. You can see through them. Like right through them. This is what my daughter wears to school every single day. You can see through it. These are what most of the masks are like for children. And they don't work. They're not doing anything, but she comes home with a headache or she's tired. Which my kid's never tired. She does sports. She doesn't have to wear a mask for sports. She plays activities indoors and does not have to wear a mask. But she has to wear a mask at school. This is what she's wearing. It does not do anything. She shouldn't be wearing it at all, but it still gives her a headache. She's still tired and wants to go to bed. My niece goes to public school in Middletown as well. She's special needs. She does go to school because she is special needs and she needs that consistency. And she was told, her mother was told that they will, she has to wear a mask. She wasn't allowed to go on the bus because she wouldn't keep it on. She physically will not keep it on. It gets put on, she rips it off. She should not be wearing one. They said, will build up her mask stamina. Instead of teaching her, they were doing this all day. And she ripped it off and put it back on and ripped it off. That's what they were teaching her. In our schools, in this district, to wear a mask constantly, she would not keep it on. She has the capacity of a four-year-old. She's in third grade and constantly with putting the mask on, the teachers were putting it on her, she would rip it off. She won't even keep her shoes on, but they're making her wear this and that's what they're teaching her all day is to put this mask on. She takes it off, let's put it back on. They're not teaching her educationally. They're teaching her that this needs to stay on all the time and she rips it off. And that to me is ridiculous. That should never happen. She is special needs. And she is being bullied, bullied by a mask. And that should not be the case in this day and time and especially now. And I understand that we had to wear masks. I decided to keep my children home because I was able to. I had the ability to do that. Unfortunately, there was parents that couldn't. I had other children at my house. Their parents were teachers and I understood that they had to be in school. They had to teach other people's children to keep the education going, to keep these kids from falling behind even more than they already were. So I had these children in my house, mask-free by the way, and none of them have been sick at all. And I made sure that they did everything that they needed to do. We did activities. We did everything. They never had to wear a mask. And now. And my daughter comes home from school this week and she's exhausted. She's so tired. I have a headache, Mom. Because you're in school all day wearing this mask. It shouldn't be an issue with children. I get it, adults, you go into a store. I'm not an animal. I'll go into a store and respectfully put on a mask. I've done it through this whole pandemic. But when it comes to children in school, the statistics are saying that children are not spreading this around all over the place. Our little children are not, you know, contaminating everybody. I had eight kids in my house with no masks all the time. And they weren't getting sick. They didn't even get a cold. And they were there for eight, sometimes 10 hours and everybody was fine because they're children. And children are gonna get sick and there's other things besides COVID. But we have to at some point say, let's not make a rule that these kids are gonna have to wear these in September. Let's not jump the gun and uproar all of these parents for something that we don't know. We don't know if they're gonna have to wear them and they shouldn't have to wear them in September. I mean, at this point, this pandemic has died down majorly. And to say that they're going to have to wear these in September is outrageous, outrageous. They need to be with their friends. They shouldn't have to be six feet away from their friends. They should be able to play with them on the playground. They should be able to sit in a cafeteria and eat lunch and not on the floor. About my kid catching something from the john, kids peeing all over the place and then sitting on the floor and eating their lunch, dropping their food, picking it up and shoving it in their mouth. Then them getting COVID in the school. Like at some point, these kids have to get back to a normal school life. And doing all of these things in September is outrageous. They just need to be normal. They need to be kids again. And if. Our kids should be able to be kids and be in a school where they can sit with their friends side by side and look at their face and not see a big mask like this that does nothing. They're not wearing these, the nurse mask. They're not in there like with these big masks. They're in there with these things that you're buying from Target. They're not doing anything. But yet you're putting them on their faces all day and they're breaking out like this poor lady's daughter. And my daughter's coming home with headaches and she's tired all the time. It's because she's not getting fresh air all day at school with this mask on. So at some point, we need to say, we need to stop and think about it logically and say, our kids need to have fresh air and throw the mask out in September.
That's a fun, yeah, right?
Got a bunch of new names. I don't know if they just differ.
There's new ones?
Sound familiar?
Any phone? Any, any phone?
Let's take whoever's on there now and then. Okay. You there, Jim?
Yes, hello. Uh, I'm, uh, Jim Broxton and I live on, uh, 21 Turner Street.
What town?
Uh, Middleton.
What town?
Middletown.
Jim, do you have something that you need to say if you live in Middletown?
Yes, yes, I, I would just like to say, um, where, where, where'd you guys get all the information about, you know, that, about your kids, about these masks being hurtful to your kids and all that? Since I don't see why, it's just, it's not, it's not a difference. It's what it does. You cover your face, you cover your mouth and your nose. Just that you can't, because germs can spread from your mouth and your nose. That's what the mask does. It's not, there's no difference if it's, if it was a nurse mask or if it's just a mask from Target, as you say. It's just to cover your mouth and nose. You can wear a scarf for all I care, but it's just to cover your mouth and nose. Since a, a lot of, a lot of this is false information. I have no idea where you get this false information. You, you guys are, you guys, like myself, are adults.
Mr. Broxton, you need to address the board, not the people in the crowd, please.
Uh, I'm the board and, and the people.
No, you're not. It's not and the people. You're here to address the board.
All right, I apologize. Right, so, um, if the board can listen to my request is that, uh.
Okay.
Just that these, that these mothers, you know, they're, they're concerned for the wrong reasons.
I know, I understand that. We'll handle it from up here, okay? Sir, please, this has been a long night for all of us.
Okay, cut them off.
All right, let's cut them off. We're, we're sorry, but we have to listen to everybody. If he says he lives in Middletown, we have to believe he lives in Middletown. So everybody's opinion has to be heard. Is there anybody else on there? Okay, see, no further comments. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Or favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you, everybody, for showing your concerns and coming out.